All right, I'd like to call the Board of Education Special Meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
That's funny.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
Flag.
Flag.
States of America. And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which is Stan.
And.
One nation.
And they do not.
Under God, indivisible.
Invisible.
Liberty.
We're liberty's.
Justice for all.
That's funny.
Right. Please note that this meeting is being recorded.
Today, I didn't bring it up.
All right, I need a motion to amend the agenda to include adding a clerk pro tempore. Add consent agenda personnel items to FGH and I and add financial action item three B. Any motion?
I'll make it.
All right, Heather, second.
I'll make it.
Go.
All right, last rough. I don't know whoever whoever made it there, Dina.
It don't matter.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
All right.
I.
Uh, yeah, you know what I'm talking about here. Holy cow. It's been a long day on the computer. Oh, I guess abstained. I think that was unanimous, was it not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So. Capital Project Non-Action Item, Capital Project Update by Lou Rodriguez of the Plumbau Group and Dave Samuel of CPL. Both are here. Great.
Hey, guys. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Pretty good, pretty good. Um, so. Did Sue, did you get the the update?
I did, Lou. Would you like me to share my screen?
Yeah, why don't you do that? And we can run through this pretty quickly and then you and Dave can jump in as you as you feel like you need to. And then when we're done, we can pass it over to Mike.
Okay, it is on the screen. Can everybody see it?
Yep.
Next.
What do I make of that?
Everybody good? All right, Sue, yeah, let's go to the next page. As always, what we want to do is talk about where we are with the progress with the contractors. We want to talk about schedule. We've we talk about where we are with the budget generally and then have some project photos. Next. So talking with the contractors right now, Del Signor, who's a site contractor, they're pretty much complete with their work. They've been working on punch list and closeout. They've actually also had their first cut on some of the lawn areas. So we got some pictures of that. Bass Hatfield. They're they're basically complete with all of their work except for glass at the front security. There's the special glass that's out the transom. It's above the doors. That is going to be coming in in December. So that that install will happen then. It's just a long lead time because of the the that that glass that, you know, the specialty of it. The other than that, they are working on punch list and closeout as well on their items. EW Tompkins. They've completed their work. The engineers have come down to do a review. Again, punch list has been given to all of these contractors have been given a punch list for their work. But they are complete and they're working on their punch list and closeout. Condor, who's the plumbing contractor, they are complete with their work except for the pump house. The pump house work due to the schedule related to the tank and the pump house itself was extended out. We're looking at an April of 2021 installation. They did tell us that they could have the the tank and the pump house to us. By February, but we just didn't feel that was a good time to open up the ground and do that kind of install. And just adding costs for winter conditions and whatnot just didn't it didn't seem like it was the right thing to do. So. We pushed it to the spring and right now we're looking at an April install of the. Of the of the tank and the and the pump house. DLC Electric. They're still working on the audio system. They've been really trying to push push that through. It's just been taking a while. This work is going to be completed within the next two weeks. In parallel, they are working on punch list also and and closeout items. As far as district vendors, we had a separate contract with Nickerson and Irwin. You know, with the auditorium seating that's been delivered and installed. Super Tech is a rigging again for the battens for the lighting that's been installed as well. Next, Sue. Under schedule, we have had walkthroughs for the temporary certificates of occupancy. At the front entry, in particular, in the offices, that was the first temporary certificate of occupancy that occurred. We did have another walkthrough recently for the auditorium addition. Dave, do you want to talk about where we are with just I know there's just a couple of minor items that we need to get done. But you might have a better because Joe was saying we have to talk to SED on some of these items.
Sure. So, yes. So, so like Lou said, we got the TCO for the elementary school office and the front entrance. We thought we would have another temporary CFO with a partial substantial completion for everything except for the stage and the set shop. And I think the control booth would have been lumped into that as well. But the the fire inspector walked through and he had some questions. He didn't quite understand the the design of the doorways. We had added some doors in the corridors to provide security only. And when he saw doors and corridors without connections to the the alarm system, he thought that those should have been fire doors. He's not really talking to me about it. He said he's going to run up to SED and get some clarification. So we're going to see how that falls out. I don't think it's going to be an issue. I think it's designed properly. And once he's finished with with that sign off, we'll be ready to go with everything except for the the stage which requires the sprinkler system.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Um, as far as schedule as well, we have the again, just reiterating that the pump house is scheduled to be substantially complete. Everything else besides the pump house is to be substantially complete by mid-November. So we're in a good position with everything else except for the pump house. And again, the pump house is tentatively scheduled to be installed in April of 2021. What we also wanted to do here was just go back and and just revisit some of the history, you know, where we how we got here. There are some things that still the district would like to get, you know, want to be part of this project. And I think it's just it's future work that you're probably going to be looking at. So I think it's important to understand what was excluded. To make sure that we could, you know, successfully build the auditorium. When we awarded the contracts, we did have a locker room alternate. We had a the sewer down to nine G is an alternate. We had some asbestos flooring replacement as alternates in the. In the kindergarten areas, sinks and countertops is alts. Cross corridors, the doors at the gym lobby. Repurposing of the existing stage, renovation of the garage. These were all items that we had looked at. And then we did get dollars on and got alternates and we just couldn't afford them. Renovating the existing band and chorus room. The athletic field bathrooms concession storage enlarging the nine G parking lot, masonry restoration and the elementary gym bleachers. So. Those are some of the items that when we awarded the contracts, we had when we went out to bid, we had made these alternates. To to allow us to move ahead. After the contracts were awarded, we continued to look at value to try to, you know, keep us within budget. So the stage curtains for the new auditorium. Were not afforded. We have additional rigging above and beyond what we bought through. The rigging contractor, the the fixed patents. There's other motorized. Units that we did not install. The stage extension is another one. That were we we didn't afford, but we're going to want to look at that. That's something you definitely want to look at in the future. Swipe card system. The backstop and the fencing at the fields. The skinning of the softball field. Some of the kitchen work and then carpet music room. So those are items that were again excluded to make sure we could afford the. The addition and all of the work that we actually did do. We did still do quite a bit of site work. And circulation at the front entry and. And again, we did site work for the entry to. To the school as well that was associated with the security entrance. So. Any questions on the contractors' schedule? Any of this work that was excluded prior to moving? Ahead?
Hey, Lou, I'm just curious. Did Condor balk at all when we told them we weren't going to accept delivery until April?
Um, he had a there was a little bit of a back and forth. But I told him, I think, you know, once we talked, once I talked him through it, he understood that it it would benefit him as well. He doesn't. He doesn't want to be working in the middle of February outside trying to figure out this pump house.
Yeah, for sure.
So, yeah, I now what what I'm waiting for, you know, I I have April as as a date. So what I want to do is I'm looking for him to confirm an exact date, like April 1st, April 5th, April 7th. Give me an exact date as to one, everything's going to be here so that we can make sure we have the whole dug prior to them showing up. And that we don't have an open pit there for for too long of a period of time.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Yep.
How how long will it take to put this in?
The actual install of the tank is going to probably be just a couple of days. And then after that. We have to pour a pad. And. Once the pad is poured, then we install the the pump house. So, you know. Usually what we have to do with, you know, the the pad is structural and it is it is something that we want to make sure cures properly. So there's probably going to be a waiting period of a minimum. Of seven days to see if we get to a a proper. Compression strength of the concrete prior to loading it with the pump house. After that, the pump house would be set in a day. And it's really just getting the the pump itself. It's a centrifugal pump and it's pulling water out of the tank. That's all got to be installed and tested. So, you know, in my mind, everything working perfectly. It's about a two week operation. If something slips. It could it could be three to four weeks. So I'm I'm thinking two to four weeks would be a good a good range for that. And again, within when you look at that, once the tank is installed, we got to get that concrete pad in place. And we really can't load that that pad until it's cured.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Before we move on? All right, Sue, next. So this is just as I've done before, just give you an overview of where we started with the original contract values and where we are to date. Where we're sitting right now with the contracts. Mike's going to get into more of the details. We've been going back and forth on. The incidental costs that would be tied to the construction. And just, you know, seeing where we are with the overall project costs. So right now, this is strictly the construction costs and the change orders that have been. Processed to date. And we're really in a good position with the change orders. We're getting right to the end. We finally got a a good percentage of them in. So now we're just pushing paper, trying to get those completed. And we've shared those with your fiscal advisors to make sure that the full picture is in place. Prior to presenting the final numbers. Next. So now at the end, I just want to show you some project photos. So.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. The first one, if you back up one, Sue.
Yeah, I got to get to the arrow. Is that the first one? Yep.
Yep, that's the first one. So that's first one, what we the reason we took this one, it shows the the drive, but it also shows that we got that first cut of 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 lawn done. And it's it's really coming. It's it's coming in pretty nice. What's nice about this picture, too, is that you can see. The different colors of the exterior before we we didn't have the reds in there yet. So now you really get a nice visual. Of what the building looks like with the tans, the tans and the and the reds going on. It looks really good. Next. So this is the south entry to the auditorium. Again, you see how there's just different plays of of the colors. The red looks really good here. And that's the the siding work that we had. That we had done in in place of the the Nietzsche panels. Next. So this is the court. This is the courtyard area. Again, you can see. How it I I think it looks really good when when you look at it tied to the rest of the building, the colors just they work well. And the the grass is starting to come in finally in the courtyard. We had a lot of, you know, a lot of activity in there. So it's really coming together. And this look, this look is looking back towards where you guys used to that door in the corner. That's where the board meetings used to be. So that's that that's that one room. And now when you when you go through that door, and again, that's an egress out of the courtyard, that the corridor is right there to your right. That that everybody would be using to get back to the auditorium. Next. So now we're inside the corridor. I don't know that you guys had actually seen it completed, but now it's it's finished. The double doors that are at the end are the are the doors associated with, you know, the the entry. Next. So this is the music room with the carpet and risers completed. Again, the the space came out really nice and it looks good. Next. This is the the music room office and you'll see that there's the 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 glass. So that, you know, you have the ability to supervise what's what's going on. Next. I thought this was pretty neat, just showing you, you know, there's the versatility of the room behind the projector screen is are the practice rooms. But. At the same time, you can use where the the picture's taken from the from the. The elevated decking area. So, you know, you can you can, you know, use the space in a lot of different, a lot of different ways, which is great. Next, this this is a picture from the control room. And that's your projector looking down towards the the auditorium area. So in the control room, there's just going to be that's, you know, that's where everything's happening. You see the ladder going up to the the crow's nest. So there's a there's just, you know, a lot of good stuff going on there. Next. This one's a little hard to see. It's black, but what it is, it's your it's one of your speaker clusters. Your your sound system is going to be pretty amazing when it's when it's completed, but that's one speaker cluster. You have another speaker cluster. On the on the other side of the of the stage. And so they're all installed. And this is the work that's happening right now. All of the audio audio work that DLC is working on. Next. So this is the the area in the in the at the rear of the auditorium. It's the elevated seating area. You can see the. The specialty handrails that are there. And you also you can also see the lighting on the on the knee wall on the lower side of that. So that's all that all looks really great. It's all completed. Next. This is again, from the orchestra pit area looking up. What you have, the auditorium has a nice soffited area. All the way around. So you see where the contract is working. That that whole area is a big soffit with lighting. Above, you know, you see the the cans, the lighting cans that are there and pointing down. And then everything above that is black is blacked out. So that again, that all looks great. And then you can see, you can see a little bit that the. The carpet, the runners for the aisles have been installed to between the between the seats. Next. So this is just looking down at the stage from the control booth area. There was a lot of woodwork that was done on the stage fascia. You can see all that work has been completed. And the only guys that are really working there right now, again, are the electricians doing the AV work. You can see, if you look up high, you can see the the clouds, the cloud that's suspended. That cloud is actually works with the acoustics. To give you better sound. And you see that on either side of the percentum opening are the those speakers that I was talking about that are hung. So you get a you get a pretty good look at what the space looks like from the high side there. And I think that's it. And then, you know, of course, safety, we want to continue to, you know, work as safely as we can. We haven't had any COVID issues or incidences with the contractors, which is great. You know, we're getting to a point right now that really is minimal activity except for the electrician. So. You know, we're, you know, we're we're still there and we're still managing the work. So. That's it. Any other questions? Or Sue or Dave, did you guys want to add anything to to that?
I think it looks great, beautiful. It looks absolutely beautiful.
Yeah, it looks great.
I know I I Joe Forte and I brought the two music, high school music teachers down there today to have a conversation about a couple of things. And they were just so excited and it is so incredibly beautiful. And they're really, really excited. I cannot wait until the students can see it.
Yeah, me either.
I won't be here for that, but boy, oh, boy, are they going to be excited.
When is that going to be?
Yeah, well.
Well, we need to have. So the temporary CFO, maybe Dave can talk about that a little more. Is not going to include the stage, but if we're really lucky, it might include the auditorium. But until the work in April, the stage itself will not be usable. So the project must be completed to use the stage. So maybe, Dave, you could talk about that a little more.
Yeah, I'll first talk about everything but the stage. So I mentioned it briefly before. So when the fire marshal walked through, he had some questions about some of the corridor doors. And it's in order for us to occupy those spaces, it's really everything or nothing. And so once we resolve that and I it's today's Wednesday, so I hope we resolve it before Friday. And everything else is done. So once I get the thumbs up that we're comfortable with the doors. My my certification is prepared. It's just ready to set to send it to Sue. And there's no wait for an SED. So if what happens this week, you could have kids in there as early as Monday.
Oh, boy.
I know.
Good thing.
In the practice rooms and classrooms.
I just have a question.
I I'm sorry. Annie was asking if practice rooms and classrooms. So, yes, so it would be the practice rooms. The band and chorus room with the risers that Lou just showed us. The room that the office looks into is a keyboard lab, but technically the auditorium is a classroom. And social distancing in that room, very easy. It's massive. So we can use that space, too, as long as we get to that point. Am I is that accurate, Dave?
Correct. And you can use the set shop if you want. Just can't pass through the stage to get to it.
Got it.
So it's just physically, actually, the stage.
Yes.
It's the stage because the stage is the only part of the building that's sprinkled.
Okay. There's a helicopter flying over my house. I think it just landed. That was loud. So, all right, that's I that's exciting, very exciting. And graduation should be an air-conditioned. Stage.
I hope so.
Is there anything else here?
So that's all I have, Sue. If you want to hand it over to Mike.
Yeah. So the second item, actually Tammy has that item, but I I really want to thank Lou and Dave for. An excellent presentation and, you know, we meet every single week, lessons on the exec committee. We meet every week also with the contractors, all the different primes. It is, it's it's been an amazing, amazing experience. I have learned so much. Oh, boy, I can't wait to tackle my home improvement projects now. I'm going to know exactly what to do when I go to the local hardware store. It's it's been a really great experience. You know, a little nail biting here and there, but boy, the payoff is just amazing. And when those students go in there and see that space. They're just going to be super excited. So I just want to say thank you to both of you and all your wonderful teams for all the work you did.
And and thank you for your steady leadership throughout the whole process.
Thank you.
Those poor contractors that are going to come to work at your house. They're going to say change order. You're going to say what? No, there's no change orders.
Exactly.
Get out of my house.
Exactly.
That's funny. All right. So anybody else, anybody else have anything for Lou or Dave? Hi, thank you very much, guys. All right, Capital Project Finance Update by Mike Fisconci and Ben Maslona of Fiscal Advisors.
Hello, my name is Mike Fisconci and I work with fiscal advisors. I've been working with fiscal advisors for the last 15 years. I specialize in capital project accounting and state aid advising. I would like to say before I get going on this, Dave and Lou, that that those facilities look fantastic. The the auditorium is fantastic. The kids are really going to enjoy the space. Project looks like it was really come together. So what what I was tasked to do was work with Susan and Dina. Along with Lou and Dave and try to sort out the schedule values for the contractors. Set up the budgets for not only the addition side of the capital project, but also the alteration side. Because when we report these costs to SED, they have to be reported. In each, call it category. So you have an additions category and you have an alterations category. And the building aid, which your building aid ratio for your district is 58.8%. Is what my job is to maximize. So with working with really working with Dave and Lou, we were able to sort out the schedule values. And really maximize the building aid and try to keep it in line with the original projections. That we really from day one set out to achieve. And it's good news is that we are right on track for that. Now, as Lou detailed, that the pump house won't be able to be installed by December. Part of my job is to make sure that the district receives the building aid so it aligns with the debt service. So the financial plan had building aid coming in a full year of building aid in the 2021 fiscal year. Well, without submitting the final cost report, the building aid won't be generated. SED gives us an option to submit for an early aid start request. That early aid star request is right now the best. The best handle we can get on the cost of the addition construction, renovation construction. And the incidentals that go along with both the addition construction and the alteration construction. That information is put onto several forms that I'll complete and I'm going to provide to the district. My goal is to provide it to the district on Friday for submission. And hopefully by, I would say, the latest November 15th, we find out whether the whether SED, which is the State Education Department. we find out whether the, whether SED, which is the State Education Department, when they review the early aid start forms, approves the request. Now, on those forms, I'm going to indicate that we are not going to be able to submit the final cost reports by June. If we do, we would forfeit, forfeit a half a year of building aid. So on the forms, we're going to indicate that it's going to go in after July and that the project was, was not designed to be completed with 18 months. These are just little caveats. You gotta work with the SED to make sure that the building aid flows. In my opinion, with the contracts not paid in full, the pump house not installed, the early aid start should be granted. There really shouldn't be any back and forth, but we always have contingencies. If the early aid start is not approved, we have one option, which is to submit in June. So if the installation for the pump house is in April, I'm, I'm, I'm confident that the contract will be paid in full and we'll be able to submit the final cost report in June. And that would then generate one half year of building aid for this capital project. And if all else fails, and we can't do that, I can also apply for an early aid start in June. If that's denied, we have another option and we can submit in December. And Ben will go into detail on how he'll structure and work the, the bands and the bonds to align with the building aid. One thing to know is, you know, why wouldn't we be able to submit the cost to date and receive building aid on that? SED does not submit, does he, sorry, SED does not accept partial final cost report submissions. So we, we, all spending has to be complete. All contracts have to be paid in full, which is why we aren't able to submit the final cost reports in December. But that being said, with the work that we've put, put into it, all expenditures are basically known at this point in time. The budget is as firm and as solid as it can possibly be. And once we get the remaining change orders and any other invoicing that's out there, we'll be able to have a full picture as to where the project actually ends up. And right now, I have to say thank you to everybody that's put in the time and effort. Like, again, the little back and forth, working through the details. But the budget is very, very solid right now. And thank you for everyone that's helped out. And thank you to Sue for the leadership and Dina for providing endless amounts of information that I've requested. It's, it's been most helpful. And right now, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben, so he can discuss the financing side of this.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Good evening, everybody. Ben Maslona from Fiscal Advisors. And I have not been to the district in quite a few years, but I always tell people, don't let that scare you. That's actually a good thing. I was very heavily involved at the pre, in the planning of this project. And if you see me every board meeting, that's usually a bad sign, because that means there's something terribly going, terribly wrong with the financing, not matching what we thought pre-refereendum. But just as a kind of, to put everyone at ease right away, we are ahead of where we thought we would be when the project was voted. So I can stand here today from my home and confidently say that we will be better off than what we told the taxpayers for this project. So that's a good place to start. Currently, what we have been doing is issuing short-term bands or called bond anticipation notes. So they're a short-term obligation. And the, the reason why we do that is because we, our entire plan was based on building aid flowing. So until you know what your actual building aid is going to be, you want to stay short-term and stay flexible with the payments. Then, once we are officially confident in what the building aid is going to be and when it is going to start, then we can convert to long-term financing. And to be honest with you, it couldn't have worked out better financially, because borrowing rates are so low right now that the interest rate that I've been using in my calculations is extremely high compared to what we're actually going to get. So I believe we're actually gonna do better than even the numbers I presented to Dina and to Sue last week. I also mentioned that the plan right now is to convert to long-term financing in June of 2021. So basically, when the early aid start forms go in, we should know whether that's approved or it's not approved. But one way or the other, we're gonna have a determination on the building aid flow. So that allows me to make a proper recommendation to the district to say, okay, here's what we should do or here are your options, is a better way to put it. Mike had alluded to the fact of the early aid start form and three scenarios, really. If it's approved, we get a full year aid in 2021. If it's not approved, we can go for a half-year aid in 2021. And if neither of those come to fruition, we may get no aid in 2021. So the last scenario sounds awful, right? No building aid in 2021. What are we gonna do? Well, the benefit of staying short-term is that we had worked with the district in budget preparation in 2021 with a certain set of assumptions. But if those assumptions, meaning a full year of building aid or even a half-year of building aid, don't come to fruition, we are able to adjust the payment that we're going to be making in June of 2021. And we will reduce the payment in June of 2021 by any reduction in building aid. So the net impact to the district, you'll have, budgetarily, you'll see a drop in the revenue side, meaning the state aid. But expense aside, we'll see a same drop will occur. So you'll be net neutral impact to the district. So that's whether you have a half-year aid coming in or no building aid in 2021. So we kind of covered all the bases and given you all the, I said, I guess, all the options, best case, middle case, and worst case scenario. Bottom line is though, that, as I mentioned, you know, earlier, we will be in a better off position financially overall. Right now, the estimate is around $75,000 on average per year. And just to give the district a little bit of, kind of an idea of what that means, when we did our pre-refereendum planning, we had estimated that all of your debt service, all of your building aid, the difference between those two would be about $480,000. So right now, I am estimating around $405,000 on average. And that's still using a very conservative interest rate. We have a couple of options when we do long-term financing. Do we want to stay at the exact number we told the taxpayer? So we could stay at $480,000 overall of your local share? We could structure the bonds, so you have that. And then maybe in three or four or five years, you drop off and see a lower tax impact. And the, the reason why that might be a good option is it may be a good option, because you may want to start setting up the next project. So that, that could be an option to say, we think our next project's gonna occur in five years. So we're gonna start setting up this, so that we have a drop in five years to, to coincide with a new project. Or we, we don't, we structure everything, so we're lower debt service now, meaning a lower local share now, which is an option, especially considering the uncertainty with, with the economy and what the future may or may not hold. But those are discussions I will continue to have with, with Sue for a couple more weeks and, and Dina and the new superintendent. But it's a discussion that probably should occur as you start to begin your 2021, 22 budget, as you start to do that development process. The other thing I'll mention is that the district does have the option to keep on short-term notes for two more years, if you want to. Generally, the methodology with school financing is that you always long-term finance after you know what the aid flow is. But with the COVID crisis, the governor assigned in the legislation that you can actually extend short-term note issues for an additional two years. It used to be five years, now it's an additional two years. So you could conceivably issue notes for two more years before converting to bonds. You may ask, well, why would you want to do that? And the reason is because you can right now issue short-term notes at around a half a percent interest rate and long-term bonds, I'll ballpark it around 2%. So you'd be paying about one quarter interest expense in 21, 22 versus a bond versus a note that could allow you to pay more principal in 21, 22 and make a larger paydown. So you basically, like any sort of, any sort of loan, school loan, car loan, or how, home mortgage, if you have a lower interest amount, you can pay more principal and your payment remains the same. So the same principles apply. But again, I will work with the district as you start to develop 21, 22 and give you options to figure out which not only fits with your long-term needs, but understanding that 21, 22 may be a tough year statewide. So we'll provide options for, for all, all, all scenarios with debt service. But just to recap, you know, I, I am very fortunate to be involved with this project and the fact that, you know, we're, we're gonna be better off than where we were pre-refereendum, which is a good, good place to be. And I think it sets the district up for any future projects very well. Well, that's it in a nutshell. If anybody has any questions, please, happy to entertain any, any questions at this time.
May I have any questions? I might have a question, actually. I'm trying, it's a, that's a lot of information. Thank you. I'm trying to wrap my brain around it. Um, but in, when, when you were talking about, you know, changing the, the, the notes to short-term, right? And the interest rate. Now, do those things change over time? Like the interest rates change? Is that a fixed rate?
All, all debt, so short-term notes, oh, everything is fixed. I'll start there. So there's no rate debt. The difference is short-term notes mature in a year. So it's essentially, you have to go back out to bidding, get another short-term note rate the next year.
Oh.
Once we lock in bonds, though, you are set and that does not change at all. And just to, I'll give you a little example. Historically, when we first started issuing notes, the net rate was a 163. Then the next year it dropped to a 144. Then it went up one year to 186. Then it dropped back down to a 155. And last year it was about a 0.9% when we sold in June. And since the time in June, note rates and really bond rates have, have continued to fall. But nobody knows what's gonna happen in the future.
Right.
That's certainly a wild card. But I will tell you that most bankers and other people I talk to in the industry, you know, this isn't gonna be an instant six to 12-month recovery period. So we see interest rates staying low in the near term, which in, in the near term for municipals is the next 12 to 24 months.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, that was creepy.
It's Halloween time, right?
All right. I, I can't, the Zoom things are killing me these days, so. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Question, appreciate the update and hopefully those bond interest rates stay really low.
Yes. I built in plenty of cushions, so I'm, I'm very, very positive with the outlook of where we are right now.
All right. Thank you very much, guys.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Take care.
Thank you.
Yep. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Right. All right. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items as listed. Annie, then. You second? Donald?
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried? Financial action item, accept annual audit report for the school year 2019, 2020. Need a motion? All right. Heather? Second? Les? All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried? All right. And adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following change order in connection with the 2015 capital project as presented to the Board at this meeting. Change order number SC-004 to the site construction contract with Del Signor Blacktop Paving, Inc., for the amount of $7,097.01 to be decreased to the contract with Del Signor Blacktop Paving, Inc. Be it further resolved that the Board hereby authorizes the Board President to approve the change order on behalf of the district. A copy of the change order will be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Need a motion? All right. Heather? Second? Les? Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried? It's always nice when you get money back. And I need a motion to adjourn. Heather, then Annie? They don't seem excited. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried? Everyone?
All right. Happy Thanksgiving. I mean.
Have a good night.
Thanksgiving.
A little early, Ben.
Bye, guys.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good luck, Sue.
Thank you, Ralph.